Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. It's the twenty fifth of September twenty twenty five. I'm welcome to the Ordinary Council meeting for this month, held in the council chambers at One Nicholas Street. We're opening this meeting at nine o'clock. Attendance at commencement. Now, we have everyone except for the deputy mayor in the room, but the deputy mayor is on teams. Can I just confirm, deputy mayor, that you can hear us and we can hear you?
I can. I can hear you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you very much for your attendance this morning. Go straight to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. We now move on to the opening prayer, and we're very fortunate this morning to have Pastor Peter Clark from the Beacon Baptist Church here. So if I could ask Pastor Peter to come up to the lectern. And thank you so much for coming in. And please feel free to introduce yourself. Tell us a bit about the Beacon Baptist Church and before you lead us into prayer.
The Beacon Baptist Church is over in Russell. And we're a part of this community which we love, and we try to make a little difference in the city of the in this great city that we live in. And so I love this city. I run around it every morning. Theresa sees me running around. And so it's a great city to live in, but I do want to say thank you to all the council members for your work and your love for this city. How about I open this meeting in prayer? Almighty God, we thank you for the gift of this city and for the opportunity we all have to serve it. We ask that you bestow wisdom upon our mayor and our city council members today. Grant them the ability to distinguish what is right and what is wrong, to make decisions that foster order, stability and prosperity for the city. And Lord, we pray for unity amongst our council, Lord, that they would be one in their decisions. We pray for the families of those represented here who represent this city. Lord, give them strength and give them wisdom, I pray. And Father God, I do pray that you will prosper the city of Ipswich. Lord, it's a great city. It has a great heritage. And Father God, I want to pray for this council, Lord, as they guide and lead us at this time. Lord, just give them all the power and strength they need in decisions that they need to make for the city. We pray for the vulnerable. We pray for the homeless. We pray for those people doing it tough in this city. Lord, that you would be with them in a special way, I pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Peter Clark. Really appreciate your blessings in that prayer this morning. And yes, I do see you running in different parts of the city early in the mornings. Item four, apologies in lieu of absence. We have none. Item five, condolences. And councillor Madden has a condolence that he'd like to put forward. So I'll hand over to you, councillor Madden.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to move a condolence motion for Mervyn Allen Stuma.
I'd like to second that, may I?
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. On the twenty first of August two thousand and twenty five, Mervyn Allen Stuma passed away. He was a husband to his wife Pat and father to Gary and Anne, Warren and Janelle. He was also husband to his second wife Kath and stepfather to her daughter Catherine. I first met Merv at a North Tigers Junior presentation night in my first year as a state member for Ipswich West. I didn't know too many people and Merv took me under his wing. He was an absolute gentleman and I was impressed by how immaculately he was dressed. I was fascinated by the stories of his games for Ipswich in the Billimber Cup days. I loved hearing stories from Merv about men from my neighbourhood who also played for Ipswich in the Billimber Cup. Men like Brian Rashley and Johnny Brown, who gave no quarter on the football field. Merv was born in Marburg on the eighteenth of December nineteen thirty seven. Like many Ipswich residents at the time, he came from a coal mining family. Merv started his electrical apprenticeship with Queensland Rail North Ipswich Workshops in nineteen fifty four. He later moved on to the position of head electrician at the Hague Moor Collery Mine at Tivoli. After the nineteen seventy four floods, the mine went into caretaker mode. New Hope took over operations and ran the mine as an open cut. After production ceased, they transferred all the men to the Jiripili Mine at Ambley, where Merv finished his mining career in nineteen ninety seven. Merv's football career began back in nineteen fifty four when he started playing for the Railways Football Club, which later merged with the Northern Suburbs Rugby Leagues Club in nineteen sixty eight. The club, we now know as North Tigers, or as I prefer to say, the mighty North Tigers. Merv played a junior and senior rugby league with Railways and Northern Suburbs from nineteen fifty four to nineteen sixty nine. There are many stories about Merv's rugby league career, some of them ending with him being involved in disagreements on the field and subsequently sent off. They were very different times back then. Once he hung up his booth, Merv had the love of rugby league in his veins and went on to coach Railways and Northern Suburbs seniors from nineteen sixty seven to nineteen seventy one. He taught players not just about playing the game of rugby league, but respect and how to tackle life in general. He introduced the three Bs: no bad language, no booze and no BS. He was a tough but firm coach, and some of his players told of him saying things like, look at me when I'm speaking. But that respect he demanded went both ways. Over the years, Merv held various positions and roles within the Ipswich Rugby League fraternity. They ranged from coach, selector and administrative duties. Merv's continuous commitment to Ipswich Junior and Senior Rugby League extended to sixty four years, from nineteen fifty four to two thousand and seven. And he would not have changed a thing. The game of league was him and his life. Merv also served his country, being a national serviceman from nineteen fifty six to nineteen sixty. But if Merv had a say in it, I may not be telling you his life story at a council meeting. Because when his end was in sight, he made it clear. I do not want any accolades or fanfare. His wish was no funeral, no eulogy, just go down to North's clubhouse and have a beer on him. But as they say, you don't have a say in how you are remembered. And I think Mervyn Allen Stuma deserved better than that. Vale, Merv, and thank you to Gary Stuma for the information he provided to me about his dad.
Thank you very much, councillor Madden, for that very moving condolence. Thank you. I'll now move on to item six, which attributes, and there are none. Item seven, presentation of petitions, and there are none. And next item is eight, the presentations and deputations. And I have here prayer for peace. This year, our sister city, Nerama City, hosted its thirty third annual prayer for peace concert on the first of August at the Nerama Cultural Centre, and close to a thousand people attended the event. The prayer for peace concert is Nerama's way to remember and learn from the devastation Japan suffered as a result of the atomic bombs being dropped on Hiroshima and Nagasaki on the sixth and the ninth of August nineteen forty five respectively, ending World War Two. Traditionally, to demonstrate our support for Nerama City, a copy of the Nerama Mayor's message is read out in full at the council meeting closest to the concert, followed by my speech, which was read out at the prayer for peace concert. So this is the address by Mayor Akio Makawa at the thirty third prayer for peace concert. And he said, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the thirty third prayer for peace concert. Eighty years have passed since the end of World War Two. I apologize for starting with my own story, but I was born after the war and returned from Taiwan with my parents a year after Japan's defeat. My parents lost all their assets and had to return to Japan with nothing, so it was a very hard struggle for them. Fortunately, however, there was no fighting in Taiwan, and all I know about the last war is from old footage and documents. So I imagine for most people in this country who are younger than I am, war is a historical event that happened a long time ago. But when we look around the world, there is no end in sight for Russia's invasion of the Ukraine and the conflicts in the Middle East. Japan's neighbouring countries are also rapidly building up their military, developing nuclear weapons and strengthening their missile capabilities. Not a day goes by without wars and regional conflict in the world. The peaceful daily life that Japan enjoys today is a precious time, rarely seen in history, but it's not something that came about naturally. In fact, it's just barely being maintained thanks to the hard work of many invisible people. I think it is of utmost importance that this work is continued diligently. Today, we'll hear from Mr. Akihiiko Nishimura, who during the war lived in what is now known as Kotaki Cho in Nerama. Mr. Nishimura experienced the war when he was in elementary school. He will talk about his life during the war when food was scarce, the air raids he experienced, and life at his place of wartime evacuation. I hope this will be an opportunity for all of us to reflect on war once again. Today, we also received a message from Haidian District in Beijing, China, and the city of Ipswich in Australia, with whom Nerama has had exchanges for over thirty years. We believe that such exchanges between local governments involving the citizens also contribute to peace. We will continue to place value on this kind of international exchange with citizens, including children, playing a central role. Our concert today will feature saxophonist Takuya Tanaka and pianist Shota Nakano. Please enjoy their performance. I'll now read out the peace message from myself that was read out on the first of August. Mayor Akio Makawa, senior leaders in the Neramberg community. It is my pleasure as the mayor of the city of Ipswich to send a peace message to the people of Nerama. As our world continues to face challenges, we must actively spread peace and hope within our nations. Our cities have shared a beautiful friendship spanning thirty one years, and I look forward to our cities continuing this strong, ever peaceful relationship long after we are gone. In the spirit of peace and friendship, I'd like everyone to take the time to honour and appreciate friends and family who nourish our peace daily. Our relationships help us all through the good times and the hard times. We must take the time to look inward and trust we are the type of people we want others to be. As we hear the news daily, we are saddened by war and crime. But today is a reminder that there is peace within ourselves and our world that must be appreciated and protected. Let's spread kindness to the people around us to nourish our own souls, minds and bodies, and foster this way of living now and into the future. Let's focus on mutual respect for ourselves and others to promote peace within our society. I thank Nerama for peace and prosperity over the last thirty one years of our sister city relationship. On behalf of the community of the city of Ipswich, I continue to offer my support and friendship to the citizens of Nerama, especially in the spirit of the thirty third prayer of peace concert. Thank you. The next one is the urban development awards. I'm just looking for it. Is it here?
Just a request, mayor, will both those be put into the minutes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just looking for the urban developer awards. I'll defer that till next month, apologies. If that's okay. I think they may be sitting in my office. I will move on to item nine, which is public participation. There is none. Item ten, matters of public interest. There are none. We now move on to item eleven, declarations of interest in the matter of agenda. I have not been told of any declarations, but if there are any declarations, could the councils please notify us now? No, thank you. If anything comes up, just let me know. Item twelve, confirmation of minutes. So any errors, amendments, corrections? No. In that case, I will move item twelve point one, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held the twenty eighth of August twenty twenty five be confirmed. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor John Eak... Sorry, councillor Augustine, looking over that way. Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Item thirteen is the mineral minute, and there is none. Item fourteen, business outstanding. There is none. So we now move on to item fifteen, which is the reception and consideration of council reports. And we move to the first one, which is the infrastructure planning and assets committee. And just as I hand over to the chair of that, may I request the chair of that committee, councillor Antonelli, if item four could be excluded? I guess I'm asking if we could look at all items but vote separately on item four.
The removal of item four to be discussed separately?
Yes, if that's okay. So I'll hand over to you.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to move the infrastructure planning and assets committee number twenty twenty five zero eight of the sixteenth of September twenty twenty five, with the exception of item four, on that report for reception and adoption.
Do I have a second? I can see... Thank you, councillor Martin. I'll hand over to you, councillor Antonelli, as the chair of that, to speak to the report?
Just briefly on items three, five and seven. Just in relation to item three, the provisional projects approval. There are two projects there to be approved, one in division three, my own division. And I'm sure that councillor Doyle will speak somewhat to that matter as well, but as will the councillors for division four may wish to speak to the matter in their division, which is a speed awareness sign. But just in relation to the one in division three, very pleased to support this. I've had personal discussions with Vic Pascoe, who is from the Ipswich District Athletics Club. He informs me that there have been a number of athletes with disabilities coming and joining the club to improve, I guess they're inspired by the twenty thirty two Olympics and Paralympics. So he requested that we look at improving access to that facility and very pleased to support that with a disability access path from the car park there, and perhaps councillor Doyle may wish to speak to that a little bit further. The item four obviously is moved separately. Item five, just in relation to the asset and infrastructure capital delivery report for July, just the month of July, in which there was a monthly expenditure of five point three five million, a positive variance of two point five seven million on the budget. I would guess, I believe quite soundly, that many people would be very pleased to see that Blackall Street has been returned to traffic. It has only just finished this past week. However, it was offline during the period of July, but people would be very happy to see that Blackall Street at East Ipswich is now reopened to traffic after major drainage works were done there. There's been a host of other major works there as well, including in preparation for the replacement, the bridge replacement of Perga School Road. There has been the completion of the service relocation works associated with that bridge. So the actual bridge replacement will be commencing very shortly, and the contractor is on site. Also, there's been progress on the drainage mitigation at Champions Way Willow Bank. Kerbin Channel pavement rehab on Cross Street. It should be finished or close to finishing by now. That's at Race View. And I believe the people of Ripley will be pleased to note that the planning for the upgrade at Ripley Road has been continuing, particularly during that month of July. And the project has been divided into stages for delivery in future years. Then item seven, I believe it was, just very, very briefly, that is the court action status report. Once again, we have, as a council, only two matters before the court, which I believe for a council of our size is to be commended, and I do commend the staff involved in that for ensuring workable outcomes with developers in the community in mind.
Thank you very much. Councillor Martin is the second. Do you wish to speak to the report?
No, thanks, ma'am. I'd just like to concur that, yeah, looking forward to speed sign on Lob Street. I can't confirm or deny that a member of our family many years ago got a speeding ticket there. I can certainly confirm it wasn't me. So I just think it's good. Yeah, no, I'm absolutely positive. Yeah, probably did pay for it.
Have you just stopped on your... Have you just stopped in your wife?
I haven't said who it is. I haven't said who it is. So, yeah, looking forward to seeing a smiley face when all members of the public drive down that road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll open up other councils for the discussion. I think councillor Doyle, you were referred to a few times by councillor Antonelli.
Oh, yeah, no. Thank you, mayor, and thank you councillor Antonelli has spoken to, I guess, highlighted two important issues across division three. Delighted to see our provisional project go through. That is in relation to the disability access, as councillor Antonelli has outlined. So Ipswich Little Athletics and Ipswich District Athletic Club are our grassroots community sporting club there that have been at that location for decades. So it is absolutely vital that we stay up to date with the facilities being inclusive for all levels of athletes. And just in relation to the Blackall Street project, councillor Antonelli and I breathed a sigh of relief this week when that one finally was completed. It has been, it's had significant impacts on the local traffic network and our residents living on that road. So I do thank everyone for their patience. I just wanted to highlight a little interesting, fun fact. Councillor Antonelli and I were advised by the engineers that so the new pipes that have gone in are fifteen hundred millimetres wide as opposed to the original three hundred and seventy millimetre. And when we think about East Ipswich Basin Pocket, they flood in times of significant rain. So it's really vital that this old aging infrastructure in our older suburbs is rehabilitated and improved. So apparently, council engineers have said that the old pipes would have taken four and a half hours to fill an Olympic-sized swimming pool. The new pipes mean that we could fill an Olympic-sized pool in seven minutes. So that's a really good analogy of just what the improvements will do for that local network. So thank you.
Very important work. Thank you. I'll open up for any other discussion? No? I don't know if you want to write a reply or no one sort of was saying anything negative, councillor Antonelli.
No, not at all. Just thank you, the councillors, but also I'm sure the Blackall Street reopening will be of great joy to the parents of Ipswich Girls Grammar as well, which has had to suffer the brunt of that traffic impact.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Councillor, do you wish to move item four?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to move item four of the infrastructure planning and assets committee report number twenty twenty five oh eight of the sixteenth of September twenty five for reception and adoption.
Is there a second for that? Thank you, councillor Madden. Do you wish to speak on the personal tribute?
Yes, ma'am. Obviously, you have some concerns regarding it. Is there some amendment you wish to move before we get into that discussion?
I guess I wanted to say firstly that I'd like to offer my deepest condolences to Colleen Agmolese, who has made this application for a personal tribute for her daughter Kiara Lee Jensen. We do have a policy in council that requires grieving families to demonstrate that their loved ones has made an outstanding significant contribution to the local area and the local upper space or the road network in context of the policy and procedure. And obviously, council officers must make a decision in regards, in line with that policy, which has quite a narrow scope. But these applications always, always come back to council as well for us to have another view. And I guess in reading this, I think part of the reason why this comes to the council is for us to have a broader view. I guess I'm keen to know, I did send off an email this morning to the CEO, whether the, there is a letter on there from the applicant stating that the property owner was happy for the tribute to be there. And I was just wondering if that had been confirmed, because I would be in line with voting against this. I think that the tribute should proceed. I think that it's just a small cross. I think it would mean a lot to the family there, for them to have a place, a memorial place. So I was in the mind to not, to vote against this, so the tribute would proceed.
Yes, yes, councillor Antonelli. Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here for the committee meeting, so.
Yeah, no. And look, I can stress to you, mayor, that there was not a single councillor insensitive to this request at all for obvious reasons. So there was certainly, the meeting was closed, obviously out of respect for the family, for that discussion to take place. And again, certainly no insensitivity to the applicant in this matter. What was discussed was the need for us to revisit this policy, have a look and see if we can broaden the scope, find some alternative opportunities in relation to this, rather than, I guess, developing policy on the run or coming up with a decision that may or may not set.
developing policy on the run or coming up with a decision that may or may not set an unwelcome precedent in the future. We felt that there was a need for a workshop to be held, not necessarily for this matter alone, but there has been a number of similar applications, not identical but similar, in which we have also been, I guess, had the difficulty of coping with the sensitivities of the matter, as well as the, the intention of all well intended intentions of the, of applicants. So I believe, and I may need confirmation from the CEO on this, that there in coming months, the policy is being brought to a workshop. Is it December perhaps, or November?
Policy or a procedure?
Mayor, through you as chair, the workshop is being scheduled. I don't have the exact date in my, in my mind, but it's certainly a policy that, that is being put forward. So there's actually two policies that are relevant to tributes, memorials and plaques. And so we've actually worked to combine the two quite old policies into a new policy and track the changes. So it's all ready to go to the workshop with, with yourselves.
And this example, this will be one of those examples that we will be discussing.
Noting that, should we lay this matter on the table for three months to see what happens out of the workshop?
Look, my understanding is, from the discussion we have with the officers, is they were going to have that discussion with the applicant. There is nothing to say that we can't revisit this in the future at the applicant's wish, once we have the, have the workshop and determine our way forward. I'm not sure whether we need to lay it on the table for that reason, because if the policy procedure changes, then we are able to obviously speak to the applicant again and see if they wish to revisit their, their application. It may, it may mean a different application to this. So, without foreboding, or sorry, forewarning what may come out of that, but obviously there's a lot of discussion in relation to it. It's a very delicate matter, very sensitive matter, and we need to have those discussions, perhaps, you know, on a round table or in a workshop.
Yes, councillor Doyle, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Chair. If I may just further add to councillor Antonelli's comments, is it, is it not a simple matter of that, that this particular application didn't meet the criteria under the current policy? We've had that recommendation from council officers. If we move to a workshop and the policy is amended or widened, we, we can reconsider an application should the applicant choose to bring it forward, and it would be simple and respectful to advise the applicant at this point, it doesn't meet the policy, but we do hope to look at it in the near future, and it may meet the criteria some months down the track and invite them to apply again. I'd certainly be comfortable with, with that approach, keeping in mind trying to be very respectful of the family, as, as well as the community around domestic violence. So, yeah, that was just our, part of our thinking on the day.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can confirm it was a deeply respectful discussion and, and, yeah, so.
Thank you. I'll open up for any other discussion. I'll put item four to the vote. Those for the recommendations that stands at the moment, please raise your hand. It's everyone in the room except myself. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. I vote against, so the item's carried. We now move on to item fifteen point two, the report of the Finance and Governance Committee. I'll hand over to councillor Tully, who's the chair of that committee, see how we like this report managed.
And Governance Committee report, number two oh two five zero eight of the sixteenth of September twenty twenty five be received and the recommendations contained therein be adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Augustine. Councillor Tully, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. There's several I'd like to speak to. Firstly, under the heading of Officers' Reports, item three on page sixty six, that's an amendment of previous council resolutions for the proposed acquisitions of land for the Ripley and Fisher Roads upgrades. They describe the, the changes as a following discussions with adjoining landowners. They are relatively minor changes, but they are required, you know, as they, in relation to acquisition or resumptions of property to come back to council. But the advice from the officers that this is progressing and that with this decision being made today, that will enable things to progress to finality, which is certainly be welcome for the community. And I guess the council is in that area as well. Item four, on page sixty seven, is the future of the old Tallagala School at, and I, I just noticed, Mayor, I did raise this at the committee meeting about the incorrect spelling of, um-
Do you note that?
Yeah, the second, and that still hasn't been changed. And I thought the agreement was that that would be amended. Tallagala in the heading to this is spelt in two different ways. I believe that the first spelling of G A double L A and not G E double L A is correct, so.
I, I do note councillor Tully, that in the council papers, it is spelt correctly on page, what, sixty seven of one eighty one?
Well, the first, yes, but the, in, in the heading where it says to Tallagala, to Trees Hill Road, the, the actual heading to the item.
That's correct.
Well, this is, this is what's been printed out and given to me.
The committee papers are still have the error, but the actual council paper, page sixty seven of one eighty eight?
Yeah, sixty seven and one eighty one has got Tallagala. Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at. On the top line.
T A double L E?
Here.
Yep.
Yeah, it is wrong.
Oh, you're right, sorry, yeah. Correct, sorry, there's two Ns, apologies, yeah.
I had raised that at the committee meeting and I assumed it would have been fixed.
They've made a different spelling mistake.
Sorry.
They've made a different spelling mistake.
Oh, I think it's the same. No, it's the same, right?
No, because in the committee paper, it's T A double L A G A double L A, and the council papers, T A double L E J, E G E double L A. So it's a, it's a different spelling mistake.
My apologies, Chair. We'll get that obviously corrected in both places for the minutes with apologies.
I, I don't know. I take it. I don't need to move an amendment to that, but.
The CEO's taken on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Well, getting on with the substance of the recommendation, I'd like to thank councillor Madden particularly. This, this matter's been considered by council for some time. And it's an important issue because it's a community asset that we've been managing for some years. This is the option to, being proposed, to see what public interest is there in, for expressions of interest for the disposal of the leasehold interest. It's an important community asset, as the local councillors have previously explained. So this will formally put in train the opportunity for that. It's, it's owned by the state government, of course, and, but managed by us. Item eight, Mayor, on page seventy one, it's a recommendation in relation to the award of a tender for the upgrade of Ripley Road and Reef Street at Flinders View. This is a, a open tender, and the recommendation is for the nominated supplier, which is confidential until the decision is made by council, be awarded for the upgrade of that intersection. I know that will certainly be of interest to the local councillors there. Going into item nine on page seventy two, that's a recommendation about what we call the intelligent traffic system, infrastructure for, for the city. This is a, a recommendation in relation to the award to Jane P Richardson for the upgrade and maintenance of that, the system. Now, that's a fairly wide responsibility for the traffic lights, school zone signs, speed awareness signs and related infrastructure. And it's a three, three point six million contract over two years. And that's to have the signals and signs operating efficiently across the city. One of the issues I raised, and we had a brief, a very brief briefing by the relevant officer, and one that a lot of drivers mightn't realise, is the harmonisation of the signals, particularly for ambulance and fire units, so that the lights can be turned green. That's the integration of the data from the state and where it is in the council system. And we are going to get an upgrade or a, a little more detailed briefing in relation to, you know, a further workshop in relation to that particular item. Item ten is the report of the Regulation Advisory Committee. That meets periodically in relation to our current review of the local laws, which is an ongoing effort. Part of that is in relation to trying to compress some of the timeframes to include the community consultation. We now have an estimated completion date of March two thousand and twenty seven. Besides that community consultation, there will be needed to be a, a big effort in relation to the actual consideration of the proposed new local laws. As I've said before, local laws that are no longer necessary or redundant or need to be changed, and new local laws which may be needed in, in an emerging city with the, you know, as I've said previously. One example of that, and I've had complaints of this already, people with electric vehicles running cables out across the footpath to charge their vehicles, not only in the city of Ipswich. I know in the city of Sydney, where there's very little off-street parking, right in the city of Sydney. It is an issue. It's things like that where we need to be cognisant of some emerging issues. And local laws are always designed for problems. They're usually not designed for, you know, things that are happening, which are okay. So I'd like to thank the members of the committee for the consideration. The meetings at the moment are, are not particularly long, but I suspect in the future they might be quite detailed. And all, all councillors are, of course, invited, and that will become important as we progress this through to finality in March of twenty twenty seven. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Augustine, the second. Do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, please. Just item eight, Mayor, the Reef Street, Ripley and Reef Street intersection. We know that there's operational and capacity issues at that intersection, and it's only going to increase with the traffic from the Ripley, South Ripley developments increasing with, with the, you know, we've got so many houses going up in there that, that, you know, the capacity on those roads is just failing at the moment. So, but by council entering into this contract with the supplier, I think it's going to give confidence to our residents. I know that community engagement has started with our residents at that intersection. And, yeah, they've been waiting a little while, so they are very, yeah, impressed that we, we're, we're starting some sort of engagement with them. There was door knocking, which is really good. And, yeah, the residents are, yeah, really confident in council. So thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other, councillor Madden?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just like to follow on from what councillor Tully mentioned about Tallagala School. Just to explain, it's, it's been a convoluted sort of exercise, but it began a while back when a report was presented to council recommending that we surrender this lease for a property that we've owned for many years back to the state government. I requested, well, I was concerned that we hadn't engaged with the community before we took a major step like that. The, the resolution is now, what's proposed now is that we basically seek expressions of interest for anyone that may want to use the school. That, that could be government agencies, it could be community groups. But the key thing is this. With the original proposal, we would have surrendered the lease and have no control over that property. With this proposal, we maintain control over the property as the less of all, and we'll decide who uses the property. So I'm very, very, very pleased with the outcome, Mayor. The other thing I just wanted to mention just briefly is the item about Tibbely Sports Fields. Council has a multi-million dollar programme that they're proposing to redevelop the magnificent Tibbely Sports Fields, where there's a number of groups that use it. Musketeers, Whitehall Road Soccer Club, St Edmund's College, cricket clubs use it. But it's a small step, but the item on this agenda is to do with the contracting of the, how we work the contracting with the, with the various businesses that will undertake the heavy lifting with regard to the Tibbely Sports Fields. There's another issue that myself and some other councillors are investigating, and that is a second access to the property. Currently, the only access is via Church Street with no turning, off Mount Crosby Road, no turning lane. I've heard that at times, it seems to happen when St Edmund's, my old school, is playing. So in, in one way, I'm sort of pleased to hear this. There's so many people wanting to get there, that police have had to be called in direct traffic on Mount Crosby Road. There is currently a DA in place for a development on Church Street that may end up with a turning lane if it's sought by SARA. So we're currently just waiting on a response from SARA as to whether they require a turning lane off Mount Crosby Road and Church Street, and that would be a major improvement. But there are options with regard to alternative access, and we're, some councillors are currently talking to council staff about these alternative access. We're very pleased with the report. And those are the items I wanted to mention, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor?
Thank you, Mayor. It'd be remiss of me to miss, I guess, the free hit on TR that the Ripley Road Reef Street intersection presents. Been agitating and advocating for that for a number of years. Very happy to see council doing what we can to improve the function of the road network in that area. It should lead to people being able to get onto the highway a bit easier. But the unfortunate thing that I take no joy from is that the exit from the highway in that approximate location is not being upgraded. That's the responsibility of transport and main roads. We still will see a lot of banking on the Cunningham Highway. And I think it should be pointed out, no surprises to anyone in the room, that council's getting on and improving the infrastructure, and we're waiting for TMR to do their bit. So just wanted to point that out today, because I think it's, it's interesting. The local road network leading up to that, it's being worked on in this project, it's being worked on in the Ripley Road project that council's delivering. And then there's this balance in between where we need transport and main roads to do what they're meant to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Madden. Any other discussion? In case I put the matter to the vote. Oh, sorry, I just checked councillor Tully. Any write of reply?
Oh, just very briefly, and I'd like to thank the three councillors for their comments. But the, it's interesting on this report, as, as it often is, the millions of dollars that are individual contracts that we as a community have to pay, whether it's parks, whether it's traffic upgrades. And it's indicative of the pressures on councils and the expectations of the community for things to be done, which can't be done for nothing, because given the limited funds that we receive, particularly as part of Commonwealth revenue, it, it's, the burden always falls on right payers who have high and quite legitimate demands. But on the other hand, I guess have expectations that, you know, we deliver them as efficiently as possible. But it's always costly, and it continues, it continues to amaze me over, you know, many years, that millions of dollars on some of these individual contracts. And we, we're, we're very careful to ensure that the, the best supplier is selected for these. So it's just an ongoing issue for all of the seventy seven councils in Queensland.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point three, the report of the Community and Sport Committee of the sixteenth of September twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee, see how we like this report managed.
I'll move it as per the meeting agenda.
Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Martin. Do you wish to speak to the report, councillor Madden?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. All of the reports that we had were received in note, which means that there's lots of good information contained within. I'd encourage members of the community to read those reports online, if they have a particular interest in the topics. The only one that I wanted to highlight today was the review of the accord and the work that's been done by council officers to see to the action items that were agreed to with the parties that the accord was negotiated with. I think they've done a wonderful job, and I just want to congratulate them on their efforts. And very keen to see what comes up as we sort of navigate what we do next in, in that space. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Madden. Councillor Martin is the second. Do you wish to speak to the report? Councillor Martin is the second, do you wish to speak to the report?
No, I may concur with the mover. Yeah, thank you.
Open up to other councillors for any discussion? Councillor Augustine?
Thanks, ma'am. Just item four, the Multicultural Advisory Committee, we've approved the terms of reference. There's a couple of action items, three action items with two of them have already been completed. Later today, there's the next Multicultural Advisory Committee meeting where those action items will be presented as well. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No. Councillor Maden, would you like a right of reply? We'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point four, the report of the Economic and Cultural Development Committee for the sixteenth of September. Councillor Augustine is the chair of that committee, how would you like this report managed?
I just would like to move the recommendations, the, yeah, as noted.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Thank you councillor Doyle. Councillor Augustine, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, I would, ma'am, thank you. Just two items. Item two, the Red Bank Plains Carols. Council, I know we all like supporting our organisations to be more vibrant and inclusive, and by assisting the carols on a multi-funded arrangement should give the organisations the confidence to arrange, which is a free celebrations for the Red Bank Plains community. I know it's always appreciated that time of year when it's a festive time for giving back to the community, so always happy to see these communities give back to our communities in such a great way. And then item three, it's great to see Vapianos open. Thank you councillor Doyle for opening that, being present and opening a good offering in our precinct. Hello Harries opened yesterday, supposed to be, I don't know, supposed to be a soft opening, but I don't think it was soft at all with our dinosaurs in the precinct. The, I don't know if any of the other councillors walked up through the centre there, it was every restaurant or offering in the precinct was just jam-packed. So that was good to see that our visitors to the precinct are supporting our restaurants and different offerings. Also, I'd like to say during August, the precinct had over two hundred and ninety-three thousand visitors, which is up by twelve point seven percent from July two thousand and twenty five, and a hundred and ninety percent increase compared with the same period last year. So what we've been doing in the precinct, I think, is with the figures, just gives us confidence that the right things have been actioned in the right way. So, and then just, yeah, I just want to thank the officers for always bringing such good reports with robust data in it to show where we're tracking. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Augustine. Councillor O'Leary, second, do you wish to speak to the report?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chair, for that great summary. I just want to touch on the new offerings that have opened, obviously Vapianos and Hello Harries, two amazing brands that really excited that we've been able to attract to the Nicholas Street precinct. We continue to go from strength to strength, and I think back and reflect on the last five years, really pleased with the way things are tracking. It was never a short-term plan or goal, it was a catalytic project to deliver benefits over the longer term. So really, really delighted about that. Great to see all the families out and about in our civic space down there in Torma Place. So thank you to council officers for programming the activities down there for the school holidays, as well as rolling out opportunities right across the Ipswich LGA. It's always an exciting time. And just want to touch on, I guess, our approach, we've always been very clear within the Nicholas Street precinct redevelopment, our focus has been on food, entertainment and health and wellbeing. So many of us attended the Comsec Summit on Friday, and that was certainly highlighted by the speakers there, some of the challenges facing shopping centres, Queen Street Mall, the old Myers Centre, and they were speaking about the futures definitely around food, entertainment, experiences and health and wellbeing. So we're well ahead of that, which is great.
Thank you, councillor. Open up for any other discussion? Thank you, councillor Nellie.
Yes, I'm also very excited about Vapianos. Tonight is actually my third time I'm going there. My daughter, my daughter is up from-
High praise with someone that said I'm eating early.
Yes, yes. Yes, I'm actually taking my daughter there and my grandchild there tonight, so yeah, looking forward to it. It is a great addition. You didn't get the invite, councillor? Oh, I don't know how that happened.
It's in the mail.
So, yes, a great addition, and yes, looking forward to having one of Harry's burgers as well.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Open up for any other discussion? Yes, councillor Martin?
Yeah, it was my turn to cook last night, ma'am, so I took my wife to Hello Harry and, yeah, had a delicious steak sandwich, a note on the menu, councillor Aunt Nellie will obviously be eyeing off, there's a kilogram burger that councillor Aunt Nellie will probably devour one morning tea, so yeah, looking forward to seeing that as well.
It's a high protein diet.
Welcome Hello Harry and Vapiano. Thank you.
Through you, Chair, I think we need to select a councillor for that challenge.
Thank you. Any other discussion? In that case, councillor Augustine, do you have a right of reply or happy to go to a vote?
No, just the imagery is just, yeah, no, thanks, ma'am.
In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chambers. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point five, the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the sixteenth of September. Councillor Madden as the chair of this committee, how would you like this report managed?
Move the Environment Sustainability Committee Report Number two thousand and twenty-five oh eight, dated sixteenth September two thousand and twenty-five, be received and accepted, and I'd like to move the motions detailed in the report as a block.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Nellie. Councillor Maden, I'll hand over to you to speak to the report.
Thanks very much, ma'am. I'd just like to mention a couple of the items on the agenda. The first item I'd just like to talk about is the two thousand and twenty-five sustainable, sustainable Ipswich Programme overview. The Ipswich Sustainability Programme has begun, it runs over September and October. On the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of September, there was a children's environmental, excuse me, a children's environmental education programme at the Queens Park, Queens Park Environmental Centre, and it was very well attended. But what I'm looking forward to, ma'am, is the event at Torma Place on the eighteenth of October that you and I attended last year, and that is the Ipswich Sustainable Living Festival. It was an amazing event. Two things that really stood out for me last year, and I hope they're repeated this year, was they had lectures, mini lectures about sustainability and the environment, as well as things like council giving away free plants and all that sort of stuff. But there was even a lifeline store there, giving away, giving away, selling recycled material. I thought it was just great, it was a wonderful, wonderful day. And obviously, I'd like to thank the council staff that will be involved in the event that will be held on the eighteenth of October this year. And just on that point of council staff, ma'am, I'd like to just mention the staff that attend to the stalls that we have regularly, and as most recently at the Black Snake Creek Festival on the weekend. They deal with waste, but really it's about recycling, that is what they deal with. And my stall was relatively close to their stall at the Black Snake Creek Festival, and I saw how many people were going there. They do a great job, they were also at the Marburg Show and at the Rosewood Show, very well attended. I almost think we should change the name where we talk about waste, because it's more about recycling these days. And in saying that, I'd like to talk about the next item, item three on the agenda, which is titled, I'll just read the title out, Greenavate Security Holders Update, August two thousand and twenty-five. Obviously, there's a lot of, there's issues with this that are confidential that I won't talk about, but I would want to, I do want to talk about this, and that is why are we establishing a company called Greenavate? We're establishing this company because we want to join with Redland and Logan Shires in building a facility at Brown's Plain called a Materials Recovery Facility, otherwise known as a MRF. I was fortunate to be able to visit a MRF, they're enormous facilities, because I've got to deal with all the yellow bin waste. I was able to visit one at Cairns, and it was an absolute eye-opener. And what this means, ma'am, will be currently when we, you know, put our material in yellow top bins and it goes to Visi down at the Port of Brisbane, and we pay Visi to take that material, they benefit from all the waste, we don't get a cent back from what we send them. Under this new programme, we will not pay, we will send it to a facility that will jointly own through Envira, Greenavate, we jointly own with Redland and Logan Shires. So we will benefit from the fact that we are controlling our own yellow top bins. I really think this is such a major change, and we went through the change with regard to green top bins and had to explain to people, residents, that the reason we introduced green top bins was we want to reduce the amount of green waste going into landfill that we paid an enormous amount of money simply to put in the ground, whereas it could be composted and sold as valuable waste. So again, I'd like to congratulate the council staff, and I know how hard they're working on this. I know in the near future, us councillors will be visiting the facility at Brown's Plains, and I'm very much looking forward to it. And in a way, I think we should shout out about what a major change this is going to be for our city, that we will have a MRF, which is relatively rare in South East Queensland. And it's a major achievement for our town, and I hope that our media department can publicise this a lot more, ma'am. And just finally, again, I'd like to thank the council staff involved in, with regard to the Greenavate initiative. Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Maden. Councillor Nellie is the second, do you wish to speak to the report? No? I'll open up for any other discussion? I just would have, like you touched on councillor Madden, the council staff have been doing a lot of pop-ups on weekends at shopping centres and festivals and shows, they're being very dedicated, working weekends and all sorts of hours to show the benefits of recycling and the garden organics programme as well. If there's nothing else, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item fifteen point six, which is the Audit Risk Management Committee. May I ask whether the deputy mayor or councillor Nellie to probably move and second that since you are our representatives on that committee?
I can move or second.
I'll have the deputy mayor's moved it. Councillor, are you happy to second it?
Yeah, happy to second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, so I should have asked first of all, are there any questions or queries in regards to the report to any council officers? No? Okay, the matter's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or any commentary?
I defer to the, I defer to the deputy mayor first.
Deputy mayor, do you wish to make any comments on the, I know there's a report in front of us. Do you wish to speak to the report?
I don't wish to speak to it, I've just moved it.
Thank you. Councillor Nellie, I think you've been liked on.
Oh, yeah, just very briefly, obviously, the importance of the Audit Risk Committee is that they look over our, regularly look over our financial statements and the like, and you'll note that in item two of that agenda or that report, the committee looked over the draft annual financial statements, and it passed muster, if I can use that terminology, after much discussion, and obviously, there was, it was with a microscope looked at very closely by the members of that committee, so, and it passed muster. And also, they looked at our budget that we'd presented earlier in this year. So, but also, there has been a couple of members of that committee stepped down of late, and that, I believe, comes up later in our agenda.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion by council councillors? No? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. I propose that we adjourn for twenty minutes, so it's, it's nearly ten, it's one minute to ten, and I'd propose that we come back at twenty past ten. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy mayor, how do you vote? Thank you, we'll see you back here at twenty past ten. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, and councillor Tullio said he will second that. I'll just check, is there any issue with me voting on that? CEO, I don't think there would be.
No. Right to proceed, just to say a few words. Yeah, it's just that the first two committees, it was noted that you were, as an apology, but not formalised as a leave of absence. And I'm not, this motion won't change the committee meeting minutes or what we've adopted this morning, but it will place on record for those two committees that leave of absence has been granted, so that all five, all five meetings will reflect that in two different ways. I just think it's important, I think as the supreme, you know, the committees are answerable to the council, I think it's appropriate that the council meeting itself could approve that leave of absence, so that the record for the future shows that that's in accordance with the actual apology and the leave that was sought.
Thank you. Councillor Tullio, do you wish to speak to the matter?
Yeah, just to correct that oversight.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Welcome back, it's twenty past ten, we've just had an adjournment for twenty minutes. I'll just hand it over to councillor Tully, I believe he wants to suspend standing orders?
Yes, thanks, Mayor, I think this should be brief. I move that standing orders or meeting procedures be suspended to enable the moving of a motion in relation to the grant of leave of absence.
Okay, thank you, do you have a second? I think councillor Tully is seconding that, I'll now leave it up to you councillor.
Yeah, the procedural motion is to consider granting leave of absence, not to change the minutes but of the but to be on the record of the council for the infrastructure planning and assets committee and it's to yourself and to the finance and governance committee. So then if that's carried, I'll move the actual motion.
Ready to leave events for myself for the committee meeting last week.
Is it recorded on the other committees, is it? Oh, okay.
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
So I'll just get, once Theresa's finished, I should have a look at that councillor Tully, to see if you're happy with that?
That's correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, now.
I'm happy to move that motion, I second that motion, sorry.
Okay, so that's the suspension of meeting procedures, now what is the, Theresa, are you able to open the, put forward that? The resolution? Well, we've suspended meeting procedures, so that's been done.
No, we haven't adopted that.
Oh, sorry, we haven't, sorry. Okay, so councillor Tully has put forward and seconded by councillor Tully that the provision of these meeting procedures be suspended as is necessary for the purpose of granting leave of absence for myself to be on the record for the infrastructure planning and assets committee and the finance and governance committee. I'll put that to, the vote to suspend standing orders. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, so we're now suspended now.
I'll move that the mayor, the leave of absence be granted for Mayor Theresa Harding for the infrastructure planning and assets committee meeting of the sixteenth of September twenty twenty five and for the finance and governance committee meeting of the sixteenth of September twenty twenty five.
Thank you, and councillor Tully said he will second that. I'll just check, is there any issue with me voting on that? CEO, I don't think there would be.
Right to proceed, just to say a few words, yeah, it's just that the first two committees, it was noted that you were, as an apology, but not formalised as a leave of absence. And I'm not, this motion won't change the committee meeting minutes or what we've adopted this morning, but it will place on record for those two committees that leave of absence has been granted, so that all five all five meetings will reflect that in two different ways. I just think it's important, I think as the supreme, you know, the committees are answerable to the council, I think it's appropriate that the council meeting itself could approve that leave of absence, so that the record for the future shows that that's in accordance with the actual apology and the leave that was sought.
Thank you, councillor, do you wish to speak to the matter?
Yeah, just to correct that oversight.
Thank you, any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand, it's unanimous in the chamber, deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
I was going to mention something at the end of the meeting, but while we're on this matter, I just want to thank you, deputy mayor, for acting mayor over those three weeks, I've heard great things, so thank you very much for taking on that role.
Thanks for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you, now I think we now vote to go back into our meeting procedures. Do you wish to move that councillor Tully, for us to go back into our meeting procedures?
Formal meeting procedures.
Thank you, and seconded by councillor Tully. Any discussion? We put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, how do you vote, deputy mayor?
Affirmative.
Thank you, we're back in meeting procedures. We're up to item sixteen point one, which is the CEO organisational performance report for August twenty twenty five. Any questions or queries of the CEO on this report? In that case, I will move it, do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Augustine. In moving this report, I was delighted to join the deputy premier, Jarablay MP at Ripley Road in August when he announced the funding of seventy three point six million dollars for Ripswich under the residential activation fund. This fund will support the construction of two road projects in Ripswich, which will unlock around eleven thousand three hundred new homes. There is the fifty seven point nine million dollar upgrade to Ripley Road from a two-lane rural arterial road standard to a four-lane median divided urban arterial road standard with associated curb and channel, street lighting, stormwater drainage, intersection upgrades, cycle tracks, footpaths, street trees, bus stops and a service road to provide access to Ripley and unlock around nine thousand homes. The funding will also deliver fifteen point eight million dollars to upgrade Fisher Road in Ripley from a two-lane rural road standard to a two-lane urban sub arterial road standard with associated curb and channel, street lighting, stormwater drainage, turning lane treatment set major intersections and three metre wide shared path with the upgraded road, which will unlock around two thousand three hundred homes. This is a record infrastructure commitment for the Ripley Valley, which comes as a result of the Queensland government listening to our council over many years. And I also note in the CEO's report, the transfer pit repairs at River View Resource Recovery Centre were completed two weeks ahead of schedule and it's a great outcome, my husband speaks very highly of the new setup there. And also note that the disaster awareness camera network has expanded from sixteen cameras to twenty four cameras, which will certainly support our community and improve flood resilience in our community during a disaster. Councillor Augustine, as a second, do you wish to speak to the report?
No, thank you.
I think, I'll open it for any other discussion. No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Next matter, sixteen point two, the appointment of new independent members to the audit and risk management committee, something that councillor Tully referenced earlier here, does anyone have any questions of the CEO on this matter? In that case, I will move recommendations A and B. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Madden. I don't really have anything to report, I think this report's self-explanatory and it's a decision for the CEO to come to the council. Councillor Madden, do you wish to make any commentary? No, I'll put to any other councillors? No, councillor Tully?
I just look forward to working, then on to the audit and risk committee.
Thank you, councillor Doyle?
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to make the comment that I reviewed this item very closely to have a look at the two recommended applicants, their background and their skill set. And I did it in the context of the departing audit and risk management committee member, Dr Enne Quail, Associate Professor at QUT, over two decades in experience in audit, risk, governance. She's considered an expert by her peers in that field and has done enormous research on financial performance and governance failures and mitigation of risks for local governments, so it was important that that skill set is not lost and is replaced, so I'm pleased to see that these two applicants bring those skills to the audit and risk management committee because, you know, so much work was done, I guess I was on audit and risk management committee, the first term post-administration and so saw firsthand a lot of the important work that was done to set up robust policies, procedures, frameworks, for instance, asset management, which informs our capital programme and rehabilitation that's needed. So all that critical work, she had a huge contribution to that work, so great to see that the two new candidates bring similar skill sets, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? I put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber, deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We have three notices of motion, so I'll start with item seventeen. Seventeen point one is a notice of motion from councillor David Martin, it's a notice of motion for Red Bank Plains Road and Sineathambi Boulevard Bridge. Do you have, do we have a, it's moved by yourself councillor Martin, do we have a seconder for the motion? Thank you councillor Madsen. I'll hand over to you now councillor Martin to speak to the motion.
Thanks Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment just to be, if the second is happy with that, just a final paragraph there, the four-laning Sineathambi Boulevard Bridge over the Centenary Highway at Springfield Central and then just remove in accordance with current state government responsibility for bridges over state highways, so if that
Thank you.
last little part there is removed, I think it still reads well.
Thank you, I'll just check with councillor Madsen as the second, are you happy with that amendment? Thank you, okay, so that is the amendment that I invited you to speak to.
Just like to speak to that, Mayor, yeah, so I brought this up a couple of months ago and it was referred to a workshop and we had a workshop with our council offices. Believe there was pretty well unilateral agreement that we proceed with this. I think as our city continues to expand, our road network is clogged and there's an expectation from the state that our city continues to grow and I'd like to see the state contributing to some of the improvements to our road infrastructure that we need. Red Bank Plains Road, council's invested significant amount of money upgrading to four lanes in part and we still need to have four lanes right through to the highway. I'd love to see state government take responsibility for that. In particular, we have the upgrade to the Greenwood Village Road intersection, which will require signalisation. Council's already made the move to have left in, left out and that will be a substantial cost to council. And our road network is already at congestion point or clogged and is able to cope with the current population of two hundred and sixty five thousand. In the next twenty years, we know it's going to exceed five hundred thousand. And as we just spoke, where you just said Ripley Road through lobbying with council, state government's contributed seventy three million to that, I'd like to see state government take control particularly over Red Bank Plains Road by virtue of the fact that it used to be a TMR road and I'd like to see them take responsibility back for that. Similarly, the Sineathambi Bridge is at a clogging point. Council again has invested significant money to make four-lane road on the Sineathambi Boulevard and with Augusta Parkway and again crosses a TMR highway, I'd like to see state government for that, so as the motion requests, Mayor, I'd like you to speak to the honourable Brent Mickleberg Minister for Transport Main Roads and the CEO to contact the DG, Director General for Department of Transport Main Roads, thank you.
Thank you councillor Madsen, as a second, do you wish to speak to the matter?
Thank you Mayor, I speak in support of the motion. What I've had to point out to a few people over the last five years is Red Bank Plains is actually comparable to cities the size of Maribar. We're talking about thirty thousand odd people are seeing significant population growth at suburbs outside of Division One in Bellbird Park and Collingwood Park. And I mentioned those suburbs because this road infrastructure is what's key to having a livable life in that area. We've taken on a lot of housing, supply pressures from the state and they've been developed and built and it just makes sense for this to be treated as a main road. I think in Queensland generally, the definition of sort of cities and places of interest has been turned into local governments, but within our own local government, the population that this road corridor services is substantial, noteworthy and certainly makes more sense now for Red Bank Plains Road to be a main road, whereas in the past probably not as much. But, which is funny because TMR's classification doesn't sort of align with the volume of people that have used that road over the last hundred years. So very supportive of the motion and hopefully the department takes it on board and actively considers the matter.
Thank you, I'll put it for other councillors?
Thank you Mayor. I I'll probably support the motion as it is, but I I support it with trepidation that just because it's an emergency on our part, we give it back to the state, doesn't make it an emergency on their part. And I feel that keeping it in our hands, we can be like Ripley Road, we can be the key driver in advocating for funding, we just have to look at the Ambley interchange, that's not in our control and we've been waiting over forty years to get funding for that road. But then on top of that, we give them this, if they are agreeable to take, I'm just talking about the Red Bank Plains portion of this motion, if we give Red Bank Plains Road back to the state, is there going to be a contra road given back to us that might be in just as much disrepair that we need to maintain, so yeah, that's my thoughts around it. I just, I just, yeah, can't see how, just looking at other roads in our, in our network that are controlled by the state and the federal governments, we wait years and I just feel that just like Ripley Road, we might be able to activate this part of the road if we keep it in our hands instead of giving it back to the state government.
Yeah, if I could, I have a few questions to ask the relevant council officers, I believe the general manager of assets infrastructure, if I could ask her to come to the lectern? Do you mind saying your name and your job title?
Good morning, Sarah Mackenzie, General Manager, Asset and Infrastructure Services.
Thank you, I just want to ask a couple of questions that were, I guess, just at the workshop where obviously the residents weren't part of, but councillors were. If this motion, notice of motion was successful, what is the likely outcome of council wanting to stay? What are the risks that were highlighted to councillors?
So in regard to Red Bank Plains Road in particular, council officers did raise concerns that have been also raised by councillor Augustine around the possibility that TMR wouldn't, or the state would not see this as a priority as we see it for the intersection with Greenwood Village Road. So at the moment, we have this in our ten-year capital plan to upgrade that intersection. However, the risk is that TMR, when compared to other roads in their network, may not see the same priority. In addition to that, we also raised that TMR historically do exchange roads, so they would likely want to give us back a like section, which again, we would probably have upgrades required on that as well.
Okay, I guess if, what is the process for handing it over or the exchange or what normally happens?
Although TMR have advised there isn't a formalised process, it would involve writing to TMR requesting that the, these, the road and the bridge become their responsibility. They would consider that and come back to us with their thoughts on that and as I mentioned, they've already indicated they would have potential raids to hand back to us as well.
And who's the decider on that? So what if they said, yeah, but you've got to take this other road, do we, is it just, is it a negotiation or is dictated or what's the?
Without using the word dictated, it's basically what TMR say.
Okay. I guess if it was as easy as handing over a road to the state, I guess, do other councils do this as well or what's your experience?
Typically, it is when a development or such has occurred or the road has to meet a certain hierarchy to be handed back and certain criteria. As council is aware, the change with Centenary Highway and Red Bank Plains Road has been mentioned. So it's usually a programmed thing where a higher priority road is coming onto the network and TMR will take ownership of that.
Okay, and also in the workshop with the councils, I think there was a list of other roads that if council was to approach TMR, there was a suggestion, I think from council offices, that we'd probably want to go to them, the number of roads, not just these, not just this road and bridge.
Yes Mayor, there were a number of roads that we suggested might be considered in that workshop and from that, the discussion was held and councillors have come up with these roads.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any questions, but I think councillor Doyle has a question.
Thank you, Sarah, and I was just wanting clarification on if we if we supported the bridge for instance, but pulled out the Red Bank Plains Road, if we then go to the state government on the basis that you can have the bridge responsibility because you should be responsible for bridges anyway, can they still come back and say, well, we'll trade, we'll give you a road or I guess what I'm thinking, is it going to limit the ability for them to give us back something if we define it as in bridges and it's a state responsibility anyway? We can set it apart, set the argument that way?
I think through, through the mayor, the bridge is a different case because it is a duplication, so it is a new asset. So I think it would be potentially considered differently to handing back an existing asset.
Yeah, okay, I wondered if.
And the bridges over a railway?
Yeah, bridges over a railway and state-controlled road.
Yeah, it's quite different to the road. But I guess that's not to say, if they say, yes, well, we'll take the bridge, but you can have three roads in exchange, I'm assuming they still have the ability to do that. I don't understand what that, yeah.
Potentially they could, we haven't reached that point of discussion with TMR yet to find that out.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, are there other questions, Miss Mackenzie? Thank you very much for coming to the lectern. If I may ask you councillor Tully, I think you know some of the history here, Red Bank, it says here reinstatement of Red Bank, so Red Bank Plains Road was on the state books? What happened there?
Yes, and can I speak to the motion?
Are you on that, are you on?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't see the, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I can speak to the motion and include that. In nineteen ninety, Red Bank Plains Road from Goodna to the Cunningham Highway at Blackstone was a main road. In nineteen ninety eight, nineteen ninety nine, it was what's called demained and, you know, the at that time, the council was responsible for the Centenary Highway from the Logan Motorway and at that stage through to Springfield. And that was going to be a king's ransom, you know, to upgrade it as people know and are aware of. At the time, yeah, we didn't have that massive expansion of development in that Red Bank Plains area and so on. And it was financially beneficial for the council to lose responsibility for the upgrade of the Centenary Highway and maintenance of it and to take over the responsibility for Red Bank Plains Road. Well, I guess things have changed, as been pointed out by councillor Madsen. You know, there are some cities in Queensland where main roads are responsible for cities which are about the size of the Red Bank Plains suburb area. I'm supportive of both and I'll say why, they are two different issues. The bridge over the Centenary Highway at Springfield Central, the junction with Augusta Park, Augusta Parkway, I believe that should be their responsibility. The other is the issues which are arising on Red Bank Plains Road. It's not as easy as just handing it back because they make, they make all the decisions, whether to accept something back or to put it back to a council. And it could be an issue where there's some trade-offs, there's some discussions, which I'm sure our officers will be able to undertake. And it could be that we, you know, we aim for two, we might get one. But that's, whatever one it might be is a huge saving for the council and for our community directly through the rate system. There was a large list of other, it was probably a wishlist or an ambit claim, if you include all the the roads which, you know, could be included. But I said at that workshop that, you know, to put in a wishlist of ten, twelve, fifteen other roads probably diminishes the focused argument we can have for Red Bank Plains Road and for Sineathambi Boulevard, which is a connector of course, you know, over the bridge, but more importantly, Sineathambi Boulevard and Augusta Parkway leading up to that. So for those reasons, I think from a tactical point of view, and we have a mayor who may be able to be persuasive with the So for those reasons, I think from a tactical point of view, and we have a mayor who may be able to be persuasive with the state government. Um in uh the negotiations or submissions to the minister. And I think we should utilize that, utilize every opportunity because um what we're doing is um trying to get a better outcome. Can I say this, that um? Uh I think part of that negotiation would have to be in relation to the timely upgrade of both. Both Synathambi Boulevard Bridge and Red Bank Plains Road. Um I, I take the comments from councillor Augustine, the, you know, to be stupid to hand it back and still be waiting in twenty-five years for an upgrade. So I think that's part of the negotiations, rather than seeing that as a um, a major problem. Um it's just um, uh just, just the tactical way we go about this. And there are two, I think people would, would agree, we need money. So yeah, everyone needs money for, you know, anything, um every local government. So that's why I'm supportive of both. And, and not any more at that, at this stage. Let, let's, let's make our best efforts with the state government and T M R. And um get what we genuinely believe is an appropriate commitment.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you for your views and also the history behind that. And I think the swap was very beneficial to our council.
Yes, at the time, yeah.
Definitely. I'll put it for other discussion, councillor.
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to raise an issue and I've, I've thought about this a lot, the, the motion. And um there is an anachronism uh with regard to uh our road networks in division four. In the, and we've had the issue about what roads can B-doubles use and what roads can't B-doubles ru- uh use, and it's very clear. And we have small sections of roads that T M R are directing B-doubles onto. Um only small sections, um and from uh state-controlled roads uh to another state-controlled road. And it might be something worthy of talking to the state government about. Because they're not, we're not talking about a road as big as Red Bank Plains Road. But just to give you an example, Waterworks Road that connects uh Kilo. Interchange on uh Warrigo Highway to Pine Mountain Road. Obviously, Warrigo Highway is a. A state-controlled road, Pine Mountain Road is a state-controlled road. They're directing B-doubles down there so they can get to Riverlink. But it's a sta- it's a council-controlled road. We have a similar situation. It's very short, we're, we're probably talking half a kilometer. Uh ver- and they've got a similar situation with Woolcracker Connection Road that connects Warrigo Highway with Caravan Rosewood Road. And it's the B-double route because it's directing B-doubles to the Woolcracker Industrial Estate. And I'm not saying that we, we need to amend the motion today, but I'd say that's a pretty good case. If, if in the future, council wanted to make a submission to the state government. And, and I'm not aware, I'm sure this situation exists in other divisions. They're the only two that I'm aware of in division four. But I, I, I think we'd, it'd be a pretty good argument to raise with the state government that you should take over these small sections of road. Because you're directing B-doubles onto these roads. And of course, the consequence of that is they're getting knocked about. You know, we're continually repairing Woolcracker Connection Road. Um Waterworks Road seems to survive a little bit better, but we certainly have continual issues with um, with Woolcracker Connection Road. Uh Major Thoroughfare, West Mac College is located on it as well. We've just invested and put a, put traffic lights in at Keswick, the intersection of Keswick and Woolcracker Connection Road at a million dollars. It's just something worthy, I think it's worthy of discussion, possibly at a workshop at some stage. Um and maybe with an audit as to other, other ro- short bits of road that are worthy of. Consideration to put to the state government. Just something, I thought it was something worthy to speak about because. You know, we sort of have the card to play in that they're directing B-doubles onto our roads, you know. Anyway, that's, I just wanted to raise that issue.
Take responsibility. Thank you. I'll look for other discussion, councillor Tully.
Yeah, I just uh, I'll put on record here that I'll be supporting the recommendation. Um it's wise of us as a council, and obviously we had workshops uh in relation to this matter beforehand. It's wiser of us as a council to consider all of the options and also all of the possible ramifications. However, I think that if we were um to be con- more concerned about the risks. Uh that the Department of Transport or the ramifications of the Department of Transport, we wouldn't make a decision at all. Um and we know that from time to time, that can be a very difficult department to work with. However, um I believe that this approach or this motion um is for us to start that dialogue with the department. Uh about um taking back um Red Bank Plains Road and more importantly, taking over uh that bridge project. Um as councillor Tully has already alluded to, it is something that is um critical to the future of um that part of our city. And uh I think that the Department of Transport should take it on. Um however, I'd, um we know that whether it's one of these recommendations or both, the department could quite as easily just say no. And that's probably the worst thing they could say. Um but if they, if we do have open dialogue with them, just commence discussions as part of this, then who knows what may. Happen and I'd be um certainly supporting this motion uh to go as it, as it stands now.
Thank you, councillor. I'll just hit with the deputy mayor if she'd like to speak to the motion.
Uh I have nothing uh to say or add. Thanks, Mayor.
Um I'd just like to make a few um. Comments on this. Um I obviously, like the rest of us, I would love T M R to take on both projects and, and many more uh projects. Um based on our officers' advice in relation to this motion, I'm, I am struggling to understand what our. I guess whether we'd get our intent. Um like many councils, our road networks are under pressure due to population growth. And upgrades to our local road networks are costly. However, if simply handing them over to the state was the answer, then I think every single council in Queensland would be doing it. Uh there are two main reasons why councils across Queensland don't do this. The first being that they lose control over the future of critical local infrastructure. And there are absolutely no guarantees that the state would continue to undertake the critical upgrades that our community needs. In fact, it would become increasingly unlikely in the context of the state's list of upgrades required between now and twenty thirty-two. Uh the second being the real possibility that the state would also require council to accept responsibility for a number of state-controlled roads. That they no longer wish to maintain, and that's an unknown and potentially could be more costly for our ratepayers. Um um dropping a letter like this on a new government, particularly one that has shown a willingness to work with us to manage growth. Uh they have just given us uh seventy-three point six million dollars for Ripley Roads that we've been asking for for many years. And it's my opinion, it's not a great way to foster collaboration or encourage future investment in our city. I would support this matter going to our advocacy advisory committee for discussion in the first instance. I think we would be far more effective if we work on the best way to advocate and strategize a way forward. Including, as councillor Tully said, using our networks to our advantage and those back channels. And just to quote Sun Tzu, tactics without strategy is merely the chaos and noise that can lead to defeat. So. Look, for these reasons, I won't be supporting this motion today. I think everyone's spoken on the motion, so I'll hand over to the person that moved it as a right of reply, councillor Martin.
Uh yeah, Mayor, thank you for your comments. I don't see it as a letter of demand. I don't see it as a hostile letter to the minister. With due respect, they've been in office nearly twelve months by the time they get this letter, so I don't think they've just newly come in and we're slapping an order on them. I look at the debacle, for example, councillor Madden and I last night, we're at Cara Lee. Whereby the interchange, we're still getting no upgrades on that, what's happening there. So they've had, again, nearly twelve months. The federal government pledged two hundred million dollars to the interchange at Willow Bank. And state government haven't committed any money to that. So I don't really think that we're seeing much benefit from the new government at this stage in terms of what I've seen in terms of road infrastructure. And again, I don't think it's a letter of demand. And as councillor Antonelli said, I believe worst-case scenario, they come back and say, no, we're not going to do it. I don't think we've lost anything. And I certainly don't want to go down without actually asking some questions. As I said earlier, the premise of this, Mayor, is our population is rapidly expanding. And state government just continues to put extra pressure on us for housing. And I think it's time, personally, they stepped up to the mark and said, we're going, we are going to provide. Infrastructure to accommodate that, uh again, the rail project from Ipswich to Springfield. So many projects that, Norman Street Bridge, again, there are a lot of projects in the last twelve months. Again, with due respect to the new government, I haven't seen any progress on any of these things, so. Um I certainly believe that we should be asking the question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those who favor, please raise your hand. Um so it's councillor um Madsen, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Tilly, councillor Martin. Uh councillor Madden, um those against, me, myself, councillor Augustine. Deputy Mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Affirmative. Uh so it's carried, uh seven to two. Uh we now move on to item seven point seventeen, sorry, point two. Which is a notice of motion from councillor Madden on the um. Asset and Infrastructure Services Capital Works Programme timeline. So I hope that it's moved by yourself, councillor Madden. Do I have a second to for that, councillor Martin? Thank you. And I'll hand over to you now, councillor Madden, to um speak, do you want to read it out and speak to the motion? Okay, thank you.
Amendment, Mayor. I don't, I'm not seeking any amendments to the motion. But I'd like to begin by thanking the general manager of assets and infrastructure. In a way, um her recent good works have led to me uh move, uh putting forward this notice of motion. Particularly a recent presentation at a workshop where she explained the process by which um. We developed the, what we call the three-year works programme, but really the proper title is three-year capital delivery programme. Um and, and that, in that presentation, she provided the um timeline. Uh for the preparation of that uh programme. Which basically begins with councillors making submissions with regard to what they would like in the. Uh additional items, new items in the capital delivery programme. Um uh and she's also done another thing that's very important and it's probably essential to my motion. And uh she has um formulated a, a, an arrangement where councillors, instead of having to wait with that, that monthly meeting or fill a written form out. At any stage can uh submit items that they would like on, on the capital works programme. So uh the timeline that currently exists, I'm, I'm making, making no major changes to that. No, no changes at all to the period after Christmas. It's just with regard to the period before Christmas. And um uh basically, the current situation, and I've experienced this now. Um councillors can, we're always able to make submissions. Um but unfortunately, the way uh, and I, the proper title for the, I think it's requests. I think in the, in my. My, yeah, program requests is the terminology used in the timeline. Currently, councillors make a program request. Last year, it was with a form. Uh with this new programme, it's with, it's recorded online and I've already done about six um for us. Yeah, it's been, I've been busy. I've got one more to go. That's, I think that's going to be the last one I'm going to do. Uh but the, the problem is, the first time we saw as councillors. The uh, the uh council officers' programme requests was when we saw the draft uh capital works programme. Uh whereas we could submit, we didn't see their, the council officers' requests before. Something was actually put in writing. So really, my, my motion really boils down to what happens in November. And in simple terms, this is what I'm proposing. Of course, it's a motion that may, I may not succeed. But uh what I'm proposing, that in the month of November, having um sort of set the timeline for. Councillors must make their submissions by the end of October. In, in November, um we, we adopt the collaborative approach and uh. We improve dialogue between councillors and council officers whereby council officers already have uh our wishlist. At that stage, we get their wishlist. And before a draft um capital works programme is prepared. We get to discuss with council officers the, the new items they wish to add. And just like we have to plead our case with regard to why, you know, uh um Schubels Road at uh, at Marburg should be sealed. I think it's fair that be- that before anything's written down, like in a, in a draft programme. That we get an explanation from council officers as to why they want additional items. I, I'm, I'm sure that we'll agree on most of them. I don't, I don't think there's going to be much fireworks in this. But I think um, you know, it's all to do with the role of council officers, which is completely different to the role of the councillor. We spend our life, and councillor Martin and I were out at the uh Cara Lee Community Association meeting last night till nine thirty. You know, hearing an awful lot about Warrigo Highway, but also dealing with a lot of projects ourselves. And on the weekend, last weekend, I was at Black Snake Creek Festival doing what we do, you know, we have stores. And we are constantly, and all, all the councils sitting around this table, I'm not telling you something you don't know. We're continually being bombarded with requests from residents as to what they want. Now, the world of council officers is different. Um they come to work in the morning, they go home in the afternoon, their phone's not ringing every five minutes saying, we want you to seal Schubels Road. In a way, our role is to act as a conduit between those people that want Schubels Road sealed and council officers. And that's what I want to happen in these discussions in November. And that's, that's pretty much it. You know, uh councillors talk to council officers about why they, their wishlist, you know, should succeed. Likewise, council officers should explain, and I, I think that's the, the right word, explain to council, uh councilors. Why their wish should be put in as well, as simple as that. We're just talking about dialogue-friendly discussions. I don't. I don't think these meetings between uh council officers and councilors will, will last more than what our monthly meetings last now. So it's a. Relatively minor change to the timeline, but from my point of view, it's a major change, you know. So that's, that's pretty much all I wanted to say, Mayor, except to again, thank the general manager of assets and infrastructure for her presentation. Um it, it gave me the, as, as I explained at the time, CEO, I wasn't really aware of the timeline until it was presented to me. It was probably in an email I got at some stage that, you know, with all the stuff we have to read, I, I didn't see. But, but I've been enlightened and now I've just modified that just a little bit with regard to what happens in October and November. So that's pretty much all I wanted to say, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Martin, as the second, do you wish to speak to the notice of motion?
Uh no, thanks, Mayor. Councillor Madden certainly gave a comprehensive explanation of the motion, so I'm happy with that.
Thank you. I'll open it to other councillors. Councillor Augustine.
Uh Mayor, before, excuse me, before I vote on this, I just want to ask the CEO, is this more of an operational? Is this operational? Are we, can we vote on this the way it's structured like that? That's, I just.
Through the chair?
Yeah, it is very procedural, but obviously, capital works programme is a major, yeah. Major uh expenditure item, so, you know, very important that um. The elected representatives are comfortable with how that is engaged on and, and constructed. So um I, I don't think that it's out of order in any way through you, Mayor.
Councillor, do you have any concerns? With the, the process is put forward?
No, not really. Just um as I think we indicated or have perhaps indicated in the past, uh Mayor. It would, would depend on, I guess if I could say at the outset, it, just to clarify, I guess for the community, that it is not a wishlist. That, that is put forward as the capital works programme. It is um. Very carefully constructed based on methodologies depending on the particular uh element of the capital works programme. Um we start with um the first year of the draft for the next three years. E- essentially being the second year of the published capital works programme, so. It's, you know, public, public uh now that there's a three we- three-year capital works programme. That's our starting point, but yeah, obviously, we review and revise against changes, um uh change priorities. Increase traffic volumes, et cetera, et cetera, in order to come forward with the draft. Um if, I, I guess it depends on the quantum of projects that councillors do submit because. The requirement to consider that project, if it's not already one that is um in our. Very long list of projects that are needed to be done across the local government area. If it is new and we've not uh scoped it up for design a- and works. Then depending on the quantum of projects, I'm just not sure we'll be able to turn around the estimates. Uh on the basis of the timings that have been put forward in the notice of motion. But we're happy to work with that and just see how many projects are put forward if we have to come back to you as elected reps and ask for. A variation of time, obviously, how resources are committed to doing those costings is very important. We try to make the best use of the resources that, that we have and to do that efficiently and effectively. So it depends as a bit of an answer, but happy to work um on the basis of what's been put forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Councillor Doyle.
May I ask the CEO a question?
Yes, please.
Uh CEO, are you um, first of all, are you comfortable operationally being able to meet the timeline that's? Set out in the notice of motion?
Uh on the basis of what I just described, yes.
It's on volume, I think.
Yeah.
Secondly, um. And look, we, we've done so much work around this over the last, well, certainly. The first term of, of four years, setting up that asset register and asset management plan. Um and we've heard from very senior people in this organisation, as well as within Order and Risk Management Committee. It was basically non-existent. So from a fiscal responsibility point of view and from a compliance perspective, are you confident that by adding to our capital programme or changing it, we will still be able to meet our obligations? When I think about safety, you know, kicking the can down, so putting a new project in, kicking rehabilitation for a road down the road, so it becomes a full rebuild rather than a resurface. Because it's been delayed, they're all the moving parts to this that we need to be very cautious about. And I get that's probably a big question, you may, yeah. I guess I'm looking for comfort from the organisation that we will still meet our legislative obligations.
Through you, mayor, as chair. As officers, we will continue to give our frank and fearless and best professional advice based on all of the, you know, legislation, policy, procedures, asset management plans. So ultimately, it's always up to the elected reps, you know, whether you want to accept that advice or make different decisions, whether that's the size of the capital works programme or what's contained in it. All we can do is give that best advice, which we'll continue to do. So when the projects are assessed and, you know, their scale, scope is estimated as to what it would cost to do, then we'll put that forward, you know, with recommendations on how it does stack up against other priorities based on the various responsibilities that we have and, yeah, the respective priority, I guess, based on those methodologies.
Okay, great, because I'm looking for the transparency when we hit November or even later, what's pushed out as a result of a change, so that we can all understand the consequences.
Yeah, that will have to come back to all councillors, that there'll be no changes made, you know. With individual councillors, this is all, you know, we've tried over the years to make that very transparent, we'll continue to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? May I ask, councillor Madden, if I may ask you a question? In the end of November, in the notice of motion, it says planning teams have reached consent with those councillors who have provided requests for projects to be considered, but in your discussion, it sounded like you were saying that in November they would come back to all the councillors for us to review, so.
No, no, these are, as I said, these are a little bit like the monthly meetings that we have with the GM. And what I'm proposing is that there's a meeting, and we did actually do this last year with two council officers. And we just discussed our proposals.
Okay.
And I guess we left the room not knowing whether any of them would get up and they didn't get up.
I guess I'm keen for, you know, I'm always keen for councillors to get all the information. And under this proposal, it looks like that if you say you put up seven roads, that the rest of the council probably wouldn't see it until the end of March, is that, have I read that correctly?
Well, that's because.
Because I'm keen to know earlier than that.
Well, that's pretty much the existing arrangements. I wanted to keep the timeline as close as possible to the existing timeline. And what happens in the next year and the first half of the year, I've just left that as it is. If, and that's not my words, that's what the exist, taking a couple of type those out, that's the current arrangements. I do have something to say in closing.
I haven't finished, if that's okay, I think, CEO, you were going to say something?
Just going to offer a helpful through you, as chair, that as councillor Madden has noted, the team has prepared the online form that can be submitted at any time and that is transposed into an electronic dashboard that's accessible to all councillors. So we can add commentary into the dashboard as it is put together by the team so that it's visible to all councillors in the same way that we're doing with the provisional projects.
Okay, I'm happy with that. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I just want to acknowledge your notice of motion, councillor Madden, and the intent behind this proposed budgeting approach is for councils to have a greater say in how the budget is shaped. And I'm very supportive of having a clear and a collaborative approach on how resources are allocated and I fully support that principle. And I like the fact that we can actually all see what these projects are, we've seen a number of projects that you've put forward. So I'll be supporting this notice of motion, just so that you know. And I think, you know, as the CEO said, they will, you know, we will have that discussion, we'll do the dance, I guess, as to what our obligations are, what residents say, what our obligations under the asset management plan are and so on. So I'll be supporting this notice of motion. I'll open it for any other discussion, commentary? If there is none, I'll go to. No, I'll go to councillor Madden for a right of reply and then we'll go straight to the vote. So if there's anything else you'd like to say, now's your chance. Okay, councillor Madden.
Yes, it's just really, just pointing out to my fellow councillors, an obvious aspect to my proposal and that is, the sooner you make, the sooner you fill out the form that the general manager has provided, the sooner they can start working on costing it. Now, to give you an idea of timeframes, today is the 29th of September. I'm proposing that the cutoff period is October for the submissions, but that's not the cutoff period for council officers to cost matters. And when I say in November, I mean, if time became an issue, CEO, the meetings between council officers and councillors could be in the second, last two weeks of November. So if councillors are diligent and they say they lodge their, I won't use the words wish list, but they lodge their forms now, I'd encourage councillors to give council officers the maximum time possible to consider the proposal. I've pretty much lodged, I've probably got one more to go. I'm just encouraging council officers, and I'm not doing this, this has no effect on division four. This is so councillors can give council officers the maximum time possible to consider the proposal. And councillor Tully, I see you giving me that stern look, you have almost five weeks to put you.
Point of order, it's actually the 25th, not the 29th.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, sorry.
I use the Gregorian calendar, I'm not sure which one.
I appreciate that.
I'll let councillor Madden finish his right of reply.
Yeah. Yeah, but I would encourage councillors to do that and as the CEO has said, certain things have to be done after these submissions. The second thing I'd just like to mention, and it fits in with what you've just said, CEO, about comments. You know, with a couple of the items that I submitted, subsequently received a fair bit of information from parties that are interested in that submission. So I don't want to wait until November to give council officers a whole lot of information. And I'd like everyone to see this information, mayor. So I think if the programme could be modified, so PDF documents could be added, you know, say letters of support or something like that, so that'd be great. So it's good to know that it's a living document and it's good that it's, that all councillors can see it as you have mentioned, mayor. That's all I wanted to say.
To put the matter to the vote, those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber, deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to the last one, which is 17.3, the notice of motion to prioritise and design, notice of motion to prioritise design and planning for an upgrade of Champions Way Willow Bank. The deputy mayor Nicole Johnick has moved that. Could I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Martin. I'll hand over to you now, deputy mayor, to speak to the matter.
Thanks, mayor. Just before I move on, I just wanted to propose an amendment, which I did send through.
Yes.
And that just is in relation to better aligning my motion for the operation of the organisation. So it's just to amend item one, that council allocates proportionate funds for the upgrade of Champions Way from the Tea Tree Bioenergy Funding Programme. And two, that council prioritise the design and planning for an upgrade of Champions Way in the 25, 26 financial year with capital works to be budgeted and commenced in the 26, 27 financial year.
Thank you. I'll just check with councillor Martin as the second, are you happy with that amendment?
Yes, ma'am, happy with that.
Then that is the amendment. Please proceed, deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor. So councillors, I propose that a proportionate, a proportionate allocation of the Tea Tree Bioenergy annual payments be directed towards the upgrade of Champions Way at Willow Bank. As background, the Planning and Environment Court's 2002 approval for the Tea Tree Bioenergy facility required ongoing annual payments to council under condition eight to be used for community and environmental improvements that offset the real or perceived impacts of the facility. Champions Way is the road on which the facility is located. Historic traffic counts indicate an average of approximately 750 vehicles per day, peaking at around 1500 with about 40% of those being heavy vehicles. These figures were recorded several years ago and with the ongoing activation of landfill and bioenergy operations, traffic volumes, particularly those of heavy vehicle movements, are almost certainly higher today. This heavy vehicle traffic has directly contributed to the degradation of Champions Way. At present, the road is in poor condition with numerous surface faults and it's got gravel shoulders and it no longer adequately services the needs of the precinct or the community. While resurfacing is scheduled for the 2028, 2029 resurfing, resurfacing alone will not be sufficient. A holistic reconstruction and upgrade is required and the resurfacing funds would be better applied elsewhere. Meanwhile, leaseholders in the council-owned Ipswich Motorsport precinct, which is accessed via Champions Way, have invested approximately 30 million in their facilities in the recent years. In contrast, council has made no significant capital investment in the precinct for many years. Given the direct and ongoing impacts of Tea Tree's operations on Champions Way, it is not reasonable that the full cost of reconstruction fall on the broader community. Allocating a proportion of the Tea Tree Bioenergy annual payments plans to this project will be a fair, transparent, transparent and legally consistent use of those funds and it would deliver long-term benefits to the precinct and the community as a whole. Thank you. Your mic.
Thank you for that. Thank you, deputy mayor. I'll just ask if councillor Martin would like to speak as the second of the motion?
Yes, thanks, mayor. I concur with councillor Johnick. I think the Ipswich Motorsport precinct should be the premier racing precinct in the country and I believe it deserves a four-lane road. At the moment, as people will be aware, the road is potholed, it's undulating and certainly in need of an upgrade. As I said, I believe it should be the premier sporting, motorsport precinct in the country. It houses the largest speed event in the southern hemisphere in terms of Willow Bank. And it also houses at the moment one of our supercar events, so definitely supportive of an upgrade to that facility. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open up for others for discussion. Councillor Augustine.
Mayor, just, I'm just wanting to clarify a couple of things with the court order. There was an email circulated by yourself. I just would like to hear from the general manager, Phil Smith, that the Tea Tree funds would be able to be used for this purpose. Just to clarify.
Yeah, I think we also had an email from the CEO this morning as well, clarifying that it could be.
Did I miss that?
The Tea Tree money, there was an email that came through this morning.
Just, chair, while the office comes up, if we're going to talk about potentially legal advice and such, should we consider a closed session or I'll leave that in the hands of you and the CEO? We do have historical legal advice that probably could be discussed, but how open you discuss that, I'll leave to you.
I'm.
It's all open.
It's a court order, so, yeah.
I think the criteria, sorry.
Sorry, there's a few conversations going on with councillors and your microphones aren't on and I just need for this meeting, for it to be chaired and conducted properly. There's been a question from councillor Augustine about whether the Tea Tree could be used and she's asked for Mr Smith to come forward and he said he's happy to respond. So I'll hand over to Mr Smith and the CEO on how to answer that.
Thank you.
And they would know that if it's legal in confidence, then we would go into closed session. Or if you could give that advice to us, we would appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you, chair. So I think there's two questions there. There's one in regards to the current governance framework and the criteria that we're using to assess the project and whether it meets those criteria. The second question is the legal question for which we've seeked advice both previously and recently from the legal team. So I can certainly answer the first one in regards to the project being proposed and assessed, is currently in assessment as per the governance framework which was approved. That governance framework seeks to align with the criteria of the original court order, which is based on the conditions of the construction of the Tea Tree Bioenergy, I suppose, resource or asset. Essentially, and again to paraphrase that, it's to offset any impacts to the community or environment of that facility specifically. So with regards to, I suppose, the assessment and prioritisation, we'd have to do essentially a cost benefit analysis as to the broader community benefit of that particular project and then whether that would be prioritised against other such projects that have been proposed. Currently, we've got a list of about 18 projects for this year that have been considered. That's currently with, I think, being sent to WAG and will be distributed to the councillors and will come up in October for consideration. The legal aspect, I would prefer to defer to either Alison or Matt Smith on that, who've sought some recent advice, or unless you can talk to it, Sonia?
So what's the question?
The specific legalities of whether this particular project can be considered or funded through the Tea Tree.
I think I've shared, as mayor noted, the extract from the court order. So it's pretty much as you've highlighted there, I think that's the assessment, as you've indicated, that needs to be made against the criteria.
So through you, chair, does that answer the?
I'll just check with councillor, does that answer your question, councillor Augustine?
Yes, yeah, it does.
While we have Mr Smith here, does anyone else have any question, other questions of him? No? Councillor, are you happy for Mr Smith to sit down?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr Smith.
Thank you.
And then I've got a second question just for the deputy mayor on just, can you just go, oh no, there it is there. Allocate proportionate funds. What does that actually mean? Is it all of Tea Tree funding? Because I would have an issue if it was funds coming away from, that it's not allocate all from Tea Tree funding.
I think the wording of proportionate is, will reflect based on officers' advice, perhaps a proportion of the impact that the facilities have had and will have on the road. And also assessing, you know, the balance of the Tea Tree funding and other obligations as well. So that's not stating that, like, the whole fund balance needs to be contributed. Like, the word proportionate kind of, you know, leaves the, leaves it to officers to make that assessment.
Does that answer your question, councillor Augustine?
A little bit ambiguous, you know, like I, you know, it's like, so if it's only 1 million that Tea Tree can give, but the project is like 30 million, then 29 million then needs to come out of somewhere else. And for me, I, you know, I think I've got, when we've got a road like School Road that's got 15,000 vehicles on it per year, I would see that as more of a priority than, I see this as a priority, but I would see that School Road in Redbank Plains would be more of a priority than this. That's what I'm just trying to work, just all the wordings of it, that's all.
To the quote we've had from, and this is asking for a design and planning, I guess, and I guess going forward to the budget, but the quote we've had for design and planning is at $100,000 in the first instance. Councillor Madden?
I'd just like to, I guess, share my views. As a councillor that's represented the Willow Bank area for five and a bit years, I think I've had a bit more involvement with everything that's happened with the Tea Tree Bioenergy Fund. I'd be more amenable to this if it included a greater level of consultation with the Willow Bank community and groups like the Willow Bank Action Group. But I would also say I'm completely comfortable if council were to actually allocate funds from general revenue or to debt fund the design of $100,000. And perhaps we can then do that assessment of a cost benefit analysis more broadly for later works once that design's completed. And I would further add to that, I think something where I couldn't comment on our. And I would further add to that, um I think something where I couldn't comment on our um likelihood of its success, but um. I see this precinct as something that genuinely should attract. Um some support and investment from the state and federal governments. It's an event precinct that already has a number of national events. Uh which we all have been to um most of them. And we see the impact that that has on the local economy. And um one of the few things that you see at those events is that the road network is a struggle. Um the Queensland government should want those events to continue to occur in uh Ipswich. And um so I think we should also have a a channel there where we try to seek some form of investment from other levels of government because. Principally, the tourism outcomes here are some of the best tourism outcomes in the city. Um other areas in Queensland uh get more money for their tourism sectors than what we do proportionally. Um so I just wanna foreshadow that. I also think that that's a path. But um I'll go back to my first point. Um for everyone here, I would have great comfort in moving forward on this. And we actually use um general revenue or a debt funding arrangement rather than using the T Tree um funds at this stage. But I'll leave it in the balance of um my fellow councillors.
Thank you. Other, any other discussion? Councillor Doyle?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I I'm supportive of this and I've got some commentary, but I just thought. Um in response to councillor Augustine and councillor um Madsen. To to address councillor Augustine's concerns, do we potentially amend? And I don't know the deputy mayor, if you're open to amending. Um two, um. Just putting a bit of a caveat around that. That the funding would need to come from T Tree. Um should it fall short after design? Um and and costs are formulated, um it would. Potentially need to come back to us for approval so that at that point in time, we can make. Um I guess a a fiscally responsible decision on where the over or additional funds will need to come from. Uh just a thought. Uh but I am supportive of this and I'm quite excited about this idea. Um I think it was back in May, uh councillor um Augustine and I, and I think actually councillor Antonelli, you were there. We attended a, it's a Chamber of Commerce um after five event. And we had a keynote speaker um from Queensland Tourism Industry Council. And one of the key takeaways from that um was around events and festivals. Um as as a local government, there the the. Uh enormous um economic benefits to our local economy in in doing those, supporting those. Um is is a no-brainer. And then we we heard, um I think it was from T Q on Friday at Comsec Summit. Um same sort of commentary that events uh and tourism. Um are are a key to, you know, the the success of um local businesses in regional communities, so. Um and certainly was discussed leading into the Olympics, the opportunities for for the regions and and cities like Ipswich, so. I I see this um ticking lots of boxes, so I'm happy to support that, but yeah, just. The unknowns around the funding would be my only reservation and and deputy mayor normally leads the charge around um this sort of stuff, so. Would be happy to take her, what what she's thinking about funding going forward, should. The tea tree funding not cover the entire amount of work that's needed. Because I have no idea. Yep.
Um through the chair from loud and happy to speak to that. Thank you for your comments, councillor Doyle. Um I think with the wording um of the allocation of proportionate funds. I wanted it to not be prescriptive. Um so that we could get um advice from the officers. Um after this motion basically. Um to look at the proportion, but I I definitely think. That T Tree should be making a contribution towards it. Um. So I'm. I'm happy with the offices to go away and work that.
Thank you. I can see the C E O has put her microphone on.
Thank you, mayor. Through you, S J. I do feel an obligation just to note that in, it's further to the discussion on the previous notice of motion, noting the wording of. Uh recommendation two, um. It wi- it will depend on the scope. Um certainly. When it comes to any upgrade of the full length of Champions Way, there would be most certainly other roads that would be. Uh via our methodologies considered to be a higher order priority, so. If it was to be fully funded from our um other revenue sources. Or from council revenue sources, then I the uh a council resolution that commits that the works be budgeted and commenced. In the twenty six, twenty seven financial year, that uh that's a big call. I I would have reservations about that. I just have to give my advice. Again, council can make. The decision that it wishes to, but the way I read that, it would be um committing more than I would recommend.
Okay.
I just would, especially I guess where we don't know what the cost is yet.
Let's go, okay. Okay. Uh councillor Doyle, did you have something else you'd like to say?
Yeah, just um again, um asking the deputy mayor um under item two. Um do we add some additional words there, subject to budgetary discussions or? You know, we all wanna see the quote, the scope of works and the estimated costs. And make a collective decision about how it should be funded before it moves forward, so.
So can I ask you to put forward an amendment, I guess a suggested amendment, so?
Councillor Tully has one.
Um, sorry. Yeah, that's on.
So you would say that the council prioritised the design and planning for an upgrade of Champions Way in the twenty five, twenty six financial year?
To to be considered for budgeting and commencement commencement. I think that covers it in the.
To be considered.
For.
For.
Budget allocation.
Yeah, for budget allocation.
Budget allocation.
And commencement in the twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven year. I just need to sort of see that when you when you see the actual, and commencement, oh, be considered for budget allocation and commen- commencement.
You probably delete some words there. Well, you've, I guess, from commencement to commenced, you can remove.
And so. In, I think, yeah, mayor, I think that that covers it.
I just let you make sure you you're looking at that.
The only additional words, um sorry, through you, Chair, you could then add to that, um to be considered for budget. Allocation and include the words, if approved, commencement in the twenty six, twenty seven financial year. Would make it.
Well. Okay. Are you okay with that, councillor Tully?
Sorry.
Okay. So I've got to check, councillor Tully, that you're happy with that? That's that's the amendment you wish to move? Could you just?
Uh that'll be subject to uh um if the mover and seconder agree.
I'll just see if, second, I'm guessing councillor Doyle, you're the seconder, uh which case councillor Tully will have you speak to the amendment.
No, I'm talking about the initial motion that councillor Johnic has moved. If she had.
Yes. I guess I'll check councillor, um sorry, deputy mayor. Are you comfortable with the amendment that councillor Tully has put forward?
Uncomfortable with that. Um I'm happy with that. It was, um I guess. The intent was for it to always fall into the capital delivery budget discussions as well.
Yep.
Um so I I'm content with that, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll just check with um the seconder. Uh councillor, are you content with that?
I'm happy with that, ma'am. Thank you.
In that case, Tories, I'll just get you to amend that. So that'll be um item two on that will be um as put forward by councillor Tully. While that's happening, is there any other discussion on the matter?
Um.
Yes, councillor.
I've already spoken, but um if I may, I just wanna thank uh deputy mayor for bringing uh this forward. This is um a really exciting. Opportunity. And when we think about uh opportunities out there, there was talk recently of a hotel needed, so. Potentially the uh the work that council may do with this and the upgrades for the road infrastructure. You never know, it it may just convince somebody to come and build that accommodation. Um we shall see.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other comments? Yes, councillor.
I've already spoken, but I have a question. So the intention now is to use funding from the T Tree Bioenergy Payments. To do the design in this financial year, is that correct?
That's the way I read it. I'll just.
All right, so I'd I'd just ask again, is there any indifference amongst the council if we would just actually just use another funding source since we haven't? Sort of asked the community. I do concede though that in terms of impacts. This road's the most impacted from the waste facility, so um my own personal views are that it's it's okay. It's just that. Um it hasn't been put to everyone the same way projects under this um scheme usually go to the community. So I just foreshadow with that. Noting that there's probably some views out there and. Uh a few people I can think of that would certainly like to be asked rather than have council make that decision without talking to them.
I guess that's, that'll be part of the process. I would expect C E O that will follow it's tea tree funding. We would have to, like you highlight, it needs to go through a process. As well.
We will, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
That will, I think we have to. Um if there's no other points, um I'll hand back over to you, deputy mayor, for a write of reply and then we'll go to the vote.
Thank you. Um I thank everyone for their comments. I um obviously, I'm biased about. The Motorsport Precinct in Ipswich, but I think it's one of our biggest, um you know. Uh economic attractors um in our region and it's got so much more potential. We've. Got outside investors spending, you know, tens of millions of dollars injecting into our precinct. Um and we are seeing the impacts of the heavy vehicles on that road and that jeopardises, um. You know, their events, um and their participants, so. I I started down the Ipswich Motorsport Precinct Advisory Group back in, I think, twenty twenty two, um and one of the biggest elements was getting. Um a master plan redone, um and the um the asset register up to date, so we could. You know. You know, prioritise the the works that were required in that precinct. So I just think, um. When I look at the the tea tree funding, um in my opinion, under the um. The terms and the condition eight, it's um. A a proportionate use towards the. Uh improvement of Champions Way um is precisely the purpose, um from my understanding. Uh of of condition eight, which is the real or perceived impacts of the the tea tree facility. Um and I just wanted to thank everyone again um for their comments. Um. This one's been like a big one for me that I've been passionate about for a while now, but I just wanted to um kinda just bring it. To the forefront so that we could get on with it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, deputy mayor?
Affirmative.
It's unanimous of us.
Mayor, I have a procedural motion to move before we move on.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll move that so much of the meeting procedures policy be suspended. To enable the immediate consideration of a motion regarding the council representation at the L G A Q conference.
Can I ask why a notice of motion was not put forward for that?
Only because I uh read that last night and this morning.
So we can't, okay, I guess we'll go through a normal process. So you're moving that we suspend meeting procedures to discuss this? Okay. Um do we have a seconder for that? You, councillor Antonelli? Yes, do you wish to speak to it?
Um yes, it's uh it's firstly the procedural motion, then the substantive motion. It's just to um. Um enable the appointment of a uh a standby or um alternative delegate, um namely the deputy mayor. Um you and I are the delegates and um uh to in the situation where one or both is not available.
Okay. Um in that case, um we'll vote to see if we could suspend standing orders. All those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, deputy mayor?
Affirmative.
Thank you. I'll let you put forward your.
Yeah, thank you. Uh this, it's I and B, that in the absence of an appointed delegate to the. L G A Q Conference, council appoint the deputy mayor, councillor Nakal Johnic, as an alternate delegate to the L G A Q. And that the chief executive officer advise L G A Q, the L G A Q accordingly. And B, that the council delegates to the L G A Q Conference be advised of section four, four, one, two, D. Of the local government constitution regarding the temporary absence of an appointed delegate to the conference.
Nice. Do you have a seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Antonelli. Do you wish to speak to that?
Just very briefly, mayor, it's to have a have an alternative delegate, which is, there are procedures under the constitution that that needs to be done. Um in advance. Um and the second thing is, just in relation to an existing provision, if um one person is not available. Um the other delegate, whether it was you or me or councillor Johnic, in some situation is entitled to exercise all of the votes of the council.
Yes. No problems. Um as a secondo, councillor Jolly, do you wish to speak to the matter?
I must admit, I wouldn't mind if that um article or section of the constitution. Of um local government.
Because I think what we've done in the past is, um if it's happened, we've had to go through the C E O for approval, from memory. Yeah.
But um it says that we're two delegates, the council can only have two delegates, e- even if we're entitled to two, you don't have to have to. Where two delegates are appointed, one of those delegates is temporarily absent from the general meeting. The other delegate is entitled to exercise evading rights of the absent delegate in addition to his or her own votes.
I don't have a problem. Nope. Any discussion?
Thanks for that.
Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Deputy mayor, how do you vote?
Affirmative.
Thank you. It's passed and carried. Do you wish to move a motion for us to go back to meeting procedures?
Uh that we resume stand, um meeting procedures.
Thank you. A seconder for that? Thank you, councillor Antonelli. We're back into not many procedures. Um now go to um item eighteen, oh, just before that, for things like that. It would be nice if you sort of gave everyone a heads up beforehand. It sort of makes things a bit easier. I think it's just better for the smooth running of the um um council meeting. Um I, oh, eighteen questions unnoticed. There was no questions unnoticed from memory, C E O. Do you, anyone? Nope. In that case, I will um close the meeting at eleven forty two. Thank you.